Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the January 7, 2025, Abington School Committee Meeting, which will also serve as our public hearing for our budget. To begin the night, I'd like to ask everybody to please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we start, if anybody would like to address the committee hearing, as I ask you, just please come to the podium and state your name and address for the records. Okay, seeing nobody, we're going to move on to the reading and approval of the minutes from our November 26 meeting. After the committee gets a chance, I'd be looking for a motion to approve or amend the minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, report of the Director of Student Services, Dr. James Robbins. I believe there's a...
Yep.
Oh, it's there. Okay, I'm sorry. My fault. Do you want...you can come up there just in case anybody has a question, but if not, so within your packet, there is a request for homeschooling approved by Dr. Robbins already. If anybody has any questions, he's here to answer, but if not, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the homeschools as presented.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So now we're going to move into the meat of the meeting. So we're going to go into public hearing for this. So in order to go into the public hearing for the budget proposal, I'll just take a roll call vote to go into public hearing. So yes for me. Pam?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Melanie?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Dr. Michelle, hands are off to you to go with who you want to go with on it.
Great.
Thank you.
It's me. Thank you. Thank you, Chris, and thank you, the committee, for the opportunity to present the FY26 preliminary school department budget tonight. Before I do, I want to thank a few people. I'd like to thank Heidi and Pam, the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. We've met, we've spent quite a bit of time going over the intricacies of the school department budget, and I'll offer, if you have, if you had anything you wanted to...or you can add at the end if you want, or you can...
We'll let you take this.
Okay. Thank you. I'd also like to thank the principals, the department heads, and the directors for their input in this budget. We have...they submit budgets to us, then we meet with principals, department heads, and directors to discuss their requests, and many of them end up in the presentation...or in the budget. Thank you. This process begins in October, when we set out to establish the budget for the next year. Budgets are due back in November, in early December. That's when we have marathon meetings to meet with everybody and discuss their desires for the Abington Public Schools. So I'd like to thank them again. I'd also like to thank Chris, James, and Sarah for all of their work over the last few weeks preparing what you'll see tonight. So, thank you. So what you have in your packet, and what's also available online, is the budget book. And I just want to take a minute to talk about what's in the budget book and let you know that everything that's in here, we can provide more information on. We're not going to talk about all of them in detail today, but if people have questions, they're more than welcome to reach out to myself or Sarah for additional information. But in the budget book is an overview of our budget for this year, our development and article schedule. Then you'll find our enrollment for this year, and also some historical enrollment data. We have the by-school count of staff members. There's how our budget is appropriated, what percentage of our preliminary budget goes into different categories. Then we have our increase by major category, the positions that are being recommended or requested, and the rationale for those, the instructional materials that are being requested by district, by secondary, and by elementary school. And then finally, there's a line-by-line budget document available for you to see, and that is how our entire budget is broken down, by staff, by materials, by school. And there's a lot of information in the line-by-line budget, and again, if people have questions on that, I welcome the questions and feedback. Are there questions on the budget book itself? Okay.
I have one question.
Yes.
This might just be...I didn't capture this before. The student enrollment did an overview of class sizes. I don't...where is that? I don't...I skipped from the planning schedule to the FTEs. And I know what schedule you're talking about, but I don't think I've seen this yet.
As do I. It's not...I apologize for that.
Okay.
We will make sure that it's emailed, and then we'll update what's on the website.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to do our budget presentation unless there are other questions. Thank you. Chris is going to be my clicker tonight. Thank you. So this FY26 preliminary budget of $33,179,294 represents an effort to secure the necessary resources to provide the children of Abington with a high-quality educational program. A few items to note. This budget tonight maintains reasonable class sizes in pre-K to 12th. It addresses the growing needs of our EL, special education, and mental health needs of our students, and it continues our commitment to one-on-one technology for all students in grades 5 through 12. Next. While we were developing this budget, a number of positions have been requested by the schools, by department heads, directors, and principals. What you'll see here are the four positions that rose to the top of needing to be included in tonight's budget. There are other positions that you'll see that are also very important and that we also feel are needed but didn't raise to the same level of importance as these four positions. A .8 English learner teacher. This teacher will provide differentiated instruction for students based on their language acquisition level at Abington High School. It also provides an opportunity for the director of EL to provide additional support to teachers throughout the district by reducing her teaching load. A fifth-grade teacher at Abington Middle School. This reduces the anticipated class size from 27.9 if we didn't add this position to 24.4. The addition of a TLC, or therapeutic learning center, teacher at Abington Middle School. This provides support for students at the middle school. There are students that will be moving up from the Woodsdale that will be in the therapeutic learning program center, which would mean there'd be a four-year grade span, which is difficult, especially at the middle level, to support in that small group. And a .4 school adjustment counselor for the Woodsdale to support behavioral and mental health needs for high-risk and struggling students. Currently, there's a .6 school adjustment counselor at the Woodsdale, so this is adding to that position to make it a full-time position. There's now three positions that were identified as being...would be really good to have, but not something that we included in the budget for this year. We have two math interventionists, a grade 5-6 and a grade 7-8. These positions had been funded by ESIR previously. This year, FY25, we did not fund those positions. And I think Mr. McCurtin would say, I know Mr. McCurtin would say, that they did...those two positions were a great benefit to students at the middle school, but just haven't rose to the level of including in the budget. And an elementary EL teacher is the other position that, again, would be very beneficial for us, but did not become a budget priority. Next, I want to talk about the increase by major category. So the next two slides, three slides, will be the areas that we're anticipating, or based on this budget, are increasing for FY26. So the first is the salary account. We're anticipating $1,286,351 in contractual obligations for our staff. We have $244,925 in new positions. So that $244,000 connects back to the new positions that we just talked about. And then, as of today, we know about two retirements for next year, and so we're taking a retirement offset. And what that means is, we take the salary of the person that's leaving, and the salary we use a master's at year five, which is kind of the average right in the middle of the salary schedule, and use an offset. So we're anticipating a $22,197 decrease because of those two retirements. It should be noted that we use an average master's year five. We hire some higher and some lower, and at the end, over the years, we have found that that's a good place to start. We may have additional retirements between now and the end of the school year. We don't know that, but these are the two that we know. We have one at the end of this year, and we have one at the end of November. So that was actually a partial year offset. Programs with other districts, including special education. We're anticipating a $31,765 decrease in special education tuitions. And we're anticipating a $360,777 decrease in the amount of money that we get back from the state in Circuit Breaker. So for every dollar that we spend for special education out-of-district placements, we get a percentage back from the state. And you'll see a negative in the tuition line, and we had a negative going into this year. We decreased our expenses in special education, which then results in a decrease in how much money we'll get back from the state. We do anticipate, though, that the Circuit Breaker reimbursement will be better for us. Right now, we're estimating it at 70% reimbursement rate because we haven't seen a state budget yet. Over the last few years, they have been able to fund Circuit Breaker at 75%, which is the highest legislatively they can reimburse, but it's too early to take that chance right now. As we move through the budget process, when we're feeling more confident about state revenue numbers or state budget numbers, we may be able to increase that to 75%. So that results in an increase to the school department budget of $329,012. Other school services. We're in year five of a contract with First Student. Next year will be year five of a contract with First Student for home-to-school busing, and we're locked in at a 3% increase, which is $35,256. We also have, in the budget, an additional home-to-school run for $85,000. That's a two-run bus, which means that it would do a high school route and then would do a Woodsdale route. We have other buses that do middle school and then do Beaver Brook. Those are called two-run. A single-run, by name, does just one school. Right now, we have four buses at the high school, which are all quite full, and there's one that's particularly long and full, and that bus often gets to the Woodsdale late and then has a long Woodsdale route. So this is to add another bus. And the last is, sorry, special education transportation. We're anticipating a 10% increase in special education transportation of $75,020. Over the last couple of years, you've seen some pretty significant increases in special ed transportation. The transporters, there's a limited number of them. We do go out to bid. I'd like to thank Dr. Robbins on the work that he does around special education transportation, but the routes are very expensive. It's an obligation to transport our students. It's our obligation to transport our students to out-of-district schools, and so we're anticipating a 10% increase for a total of $195,276 in other school services. And our last category is technology and instructional materials. We anticipate an increase in instructional materials of $112,285 and $240,000 for laptop replacements. We are in a really effective laptop replacement cycle. Students get a new laptop in grade 5, then they use it for four years, then they get a new laptop in grade 9 and use that for four years. When a student turns in their laptop at the end of eighth grade, Rich Baikowski and the technology team looks at every single laptops and makes a decision. There are some laptops that can go back into circulation and be laptops that are loners, or for new students, they are in good shape and they can go back into the secondary circulation, or their laptops are moved down to the elementary level. And we have laptop, sets of laptops in every classroom at the elementary level. Or if the laptop is in neither shape to do either of those things, then they're cannibalized for parts, and the technology department uses those as they're repairing computers for students. So nothing goes to waste. And we're also on a six-year cycle to replace faculty laptops, so that's also, faculty and staff, so that's also included in the $240,000. For an increase of technology and instructional materials of $352,285. For a total increase in the school department budget from FY25 to FY26 of 7.7% or $2385,652. FY26 School Committee preliminary budget is $33,179,294.
Thank you. Before I turn over the committee to see if there's any questions with being the public hearing, I just want to ask if anybody in the audience had any questions that they wanted to do. And I'll leave the public hearing open for now if any questions come up as we ask anything, but if there's anything off the top that you wanted to address to the committee or Dr. Michelle, I want to give you this opportunity right now. I have some, but I'll just ask if anybody else on the committee wants to, has any questions to ask Dr. Michelle. We can get started on our end. All right, I'll go.
Sure.
So my first one is, so all my questions are about the increases.
Okay.
And if this puts us in an untenable position in terms of negotiations, you can tell me that, but what percentage increase is that 1286,351, assuming?
The increase has not been negotiated yet with the association, so that includes steps and lanes.
Okay.
And then 150E is an amount of money that's an enablement to negotiate.
Okay.
So it's an amount of money for all employees in the Abington Public Schools put together to negotiate a contract.
Okay. All right. So I know you said the Circuit Breaker number is at 70%.
Yes.
Sarah, do you know roughly what it would be if it gets up to 75%? Like, how much more money would we save? If you can't get it right now, it's okay.
Sarah can get it while I'm answering the next question. It would be in Section 7, the difference between 70 and 75.
So my next, the transportation contract.
It's about $100,000.
Okay. All right. Thank you. The transportation contract, you said it was year five?
Yep.
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer, but how long is the contract for? Is it five-year contract?
Five.
Okay.
It was a three-year contract with two one-year options.
Okay.
And so unfortunately, we're going to have to go out to bid next year.
Okay.
Which is rolling the dice.
Gotcha. I understand. The last one I had, I believe in the past, we've been able to move laptop replacement to the capital plan. Is there thoughts in talking with the finance committee or town manager about possibly being able to continue to do that?
We have not had those discussions yet. I felt it was important to include it in our operating budget, and then if it has to be moved out to balance the town budget, then I would hope that the town would consider it as a capital item.
Okay. All right. That takes care of the questions that I had.
We also, this year, also included an instructional material line as a capital item.
Okay.
Which they also may consider.
Okay. All right. Anybody else?
Can I ask a clarifying question? The therapeutic learning centers, is it an accurate statement to say, by the nature of how we've structured, and this might be Dr. Robbins' question, by nature of how we've structured those centers, we're able to keep students in the Abington schools as opposed to sending them out of district? Is that the same population of students I'd be thinking about?
Yeah, the most part. Yeah, the therapeutic learning centers are designed to serve the students with the highest level of need. So it is the case that by virtue of running these classrooms, we are able to sustain students who wouldn't be successful in the mainstream general ed environment. So the quick answer to your question is, yes, it absolutely does help us serve students here, who if the classrooms didn't exist, we would need to find an alternative solution.
Okay. Which is going to be more expensive.
Yes.
Than teaching them here, and then, as we saw, a 10% increase transporting them out of district.
100%.
So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think my thing is more just, Pam, jump in here, too. Three and a half hours on a Friday where we literally went through line by line, and I am not naturally a budget and finance person, and I walked out with an understanding of, A, the fact that we have some really intelligent people at this table, and some very patient people, but B, we have a crew who is dedicated to providing the very best while also being very mindful and thoughtful of how we are spending the money that we have. So I know you did your thanks, but I also would like to extend my gratitude for the fact that we have people who have put in, I can't even imagine how many hours. If it took three and a half hours to go through line by line to explain it to us, the amount of time and the refiguring and the restructuring. So thank you to everyone whose work on that, and I'm going to keep my fingers crossed that things come out on the better side of where we kind of threw our little optimistic darts here. So, thank you.
Thank you. And it really is a team effort, and many hours were put into this by many people that are in this room, so really, I want to thank everybody for their work.
Anyone else have any questions?
Oh, I just want to clarify something that I know is going to be a question. The vocational buses are not included in our transportation. I just want to make that point clear. The only buses that we pay for go to the Aggie? Okay. So in case anyone was wondering.
Will you take that for a second? So I know that there have been some questions in the community around this. Our transportation in Abington is for students that attend the Abington Public Schools. That's our transportation, home-to-school, regular education. There's special education that's separate, but those are Abington students going to private or collaborative placements through the Abington Public Schools. Other schools, you see buses in town, South Shore Charter, South Shore Voc Tech, those are not paid by the school department budget. You will see a warrant article in a minute that is separate from our budget for transportation for students to attend Norfolk Agricultural School, but not, Social Voc Tech is not included in our budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Any else have any questions? I'll turn it back to the public before I close the public hearing, if anybody has any questions based on what we've discussed. All right, so I'll be looking to come out of the public hearing, and we're not sure if it's a roll call vote, but it can't hurt. So to come out of the public hearing, I'll go yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, great. No problem. So with that said, I'll be looking for a couple...we're going to have three different motions. So the first one is a motion to submit for the annual town meeting warrant, a proposed fiscal year 2026 budget figure of $33,179,294 as the amount requested for the school department's operating budget and is just outlined by Dr. Michelle.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The second one, which is, I believe, the transportation one Dr. Michelle was just talking about. Okay. You want to go first?
Sure.
Sorry. So I'll look for a motion to submit for the annual town meeting warrant, a proposed figure of $17,490 as the amount requested for student transportation services to Abington students attending out-of-district vocational schools as non-resident students for the 2025-2026 school year. The school committee or their designees shall be authorized to expend from this fund or act on anything relative thereto.
So as I mentioned a moment ago, we have students that attend Norfolk Agricultural School in Walpole, and Sarah works with First Student, and we run, the Abington Public Schools actually oversees a collaborative bus that there are 12 communities on the South Shore that come together, and we have actually two buses, 12 communities, that take our students to Norfolk Agricultural School for the cost of, just shy of $18,000. If any one of us had to do that ourselves, it would be upwards of $85,000, $90,000. So this is, there's a lot of work for Sarah in August, but it's a great benefit to us.
Thank you. If there are no questions, I'll be looking for a motion to approve this article as requested.
Make a motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, one that I believe is just kind of a revolving fund that always seems strange each time. So looking for an approval for a motion to submit for the annual town meeting warrant, an article to continue a revolving account in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53, E1 and 2. The set account is to be funded by the fines leveled, levied against Abington businesses which violate state or local tobacco control laws, bylaws, and regulations, to be expended by the Abington School Department to fund substance abuse prevention programs, not to exceed $8,000 for the ensuing fiscal year, or take any other action relative thereto. Can I ask you, in layman's terms, to just explain that for everybody?
Sure.
Thank you.
So there's an account that's been established in accordance with Mass. General Law 44 that any fine that the police department levies against, I guess it's the police department and the health department, levy against a business in town. That money comes into that account, which can then be expended by the school department. There have not been any additions to that account since, account since?
2022.
2022. Any expenditure from that account needs to be around substance or tobacco use or abuse, and I know that it is something that our department heads and our director of health and wellness and our nurses are aware of that account, and over the years have purchased materials that support substance abuse and tobacco use.
Thank you. And I guess I'm going to take it as good news that there's been no additions to that fund in the past two-plus years.
Yes.
So thank you to the Abington businesses. So I'll look for a motion to approve from the committee or any other questions you have on it. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, report of the Director of Finance and Operations, Ms. Saragini.
So tonight, I have for you the proposed FY26 capital plan that we will be looking to submit to the town for consideration to be included in their capital plan. The item... The items may look familiar as all of them were also featured in 2025. So the first item is the Woodsdale Elementary School, the roof replacement. This has been on the capital plan for several years. Currently, the roof is tight, but we consistently have to make repairs to it. We have a roof contracting company that comes out in addition to Mr. Lynn, Director of Maintenance. But the contractor had, you know, each time tells us that this roof is approaching the end of its usable life. So this is clearly a significant cost at $1.5 million estimate to replace it. If this is something that we came to the time that we would be replacing it, we would be able to potentially partner with MSBA for a partial reimbursement partnership. So the next up is at the Beaverbrook School. Again, these were on the plan last year, plan proposal last year for resurfacing all of the paved areas at the Beaverbrook, including the play area and resetting the storm drains. Next up, we have the large play structure at the rear of the building, replacing that, installation and related expenses at $200,000. And the last one being potentially cleaning up inside the courtyard and adding a smaller ADA compliant play structure in the courtyard. And then lastly, we have the Frolio, which is the exterior ADA compliant ramp, which has also been on here for a number of years. It is also part of the town's capital plan. And that would be to add an exterior ADA compliant ramp to the front of the building at the Frolio that will tie in with the architecture of the Frolio and bring you right up to that main floor, which we don't currently have. So that is also on here. And as we've discussed previously, many times in the past, both the Beaverbrook and Woodsdale are both aging. As we know, the Beaverbrook was built in 1952. The Woodsdale was built shortly after in 1958. Both buildings are in need of significant building system repairs, upgrades or replacement. And I do anticipate in time that we will be coming to the town and to this committee for a request for a feasibility study for a renovated or new elementary school. Are there any questions on the proposed FY26 capital plan?
I don't have any questions. Just for those, so the courtyard, thank you for explaining. I guess for those that don't remember Beaverbrook, if you don't, it's, if you think of it as like an H or a U, it's in the middle of the open space, that's the best way to describe it, for those that are familiar who haven't been there in a long time.
Where the ducks play.
Yeah, yeah. Sarah, thank you for, thank you for mentioning the feasibility, especially as it relates to item one, obviously right on this list. That's the biggest thing. I think when I first came on, we all heard about windows at the building that did locate here prior, so we would like to avoid that if possible. If there's no other questions, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the fiscal year 2026 capital plan, as presented by Mrs. Gany, or amended if anybody has any amendments to it.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So next up, we are proposing a tuition increase, a structured tuition increase for the Abington Early Education Program. Dr. Basta, Dr. Robbins, myself and Annie Robinson, Director of the Abington Early Education Program, have worked together the last month to pull together other towns tuition rates. The tuition at Abington Early Education Program has not increased since 2015. And Annie Robinson is here tonight to walk us through the presentation.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. So you're going to be moving us forward here. So just to give you a sense of who the Abington Early Education Program serves in our community, if we look at this slide here, this is just our community peers. So these are our tuition paying students. The Abington Early Education Program, just to review for everyone, is, our classrooms are composed of both community peers and students that receive special education services. Our community peers are tuition paying students. And you can see over the, historically, we've been growing each year, the little blip there with COVID, obviously. But moving forward, we've consistently been increasing the number of community peers that we've been able to serve. We've operated with a waiting list for the past three years, which is really remarkable. When we talk to some of our neighboring districts, many of them are really struggling to find peers to have as part of their program. That second chart over there just gives you a sense of how, what the distribution is of our peers. So we offer, we run half day programs. We offer a half day program in the morning, a morning session and an afternoon session. We allow parents a lot of, and families a lot of flexibility in the, in the sessions that they choose. So we don't have set, you have to take a two day or a three day, they can really choose the number of sessions that they want. And that just gives you a sense of they really are accessing all of them. This year, we had a little bit of a decrease in the number of families that were choosing our afternoon five day session, but it is still something that a number of families did, did access. In terms of special education, our special education students do not pay a tuition. They attend the program free of charge as part of their special education services. They comprise less than 50% of a class roster. So the Abington Early Education Program runs with a number of 15 students per session in each classroom, eight of which are community peers, and then up to seven of which are students that are receiving some level of special education support. And again, those students do not, do not contribute tuition. Just to talk about some of the curriculum improvements that we've done over the past few years, and I know I've brought this to you in our, in our annual meetings, but, so we've purchased curriculum, specific curriculum that aligns with curriculum that's used at the Beaverbrook. So we've really worked very hard to really work with fidelity in terms of providing students with research evidence based curriculum in their, during their time in the session. So some of those included the Learning Without Tears curriculum, the Hegarty curriculum, and the Lively Letters curriculum, all of which align with curriculums that are used at Beaverbrook. Additionally, we've been, the past few years, we've spent a nice amount of money on increasing our books and our access to literacy for our students. So we've really worked hard in increasing our reading nooks, the number of books that are provided, the variety of books that are provided. We've gone through and purchased a number of big books for group instruction. And then we've also worked closely with Vicky Graham. She has created some listening centers for our classrooms, really focusing on that literacy development, early literacy development. And then additionally, we've been able to purchase some gross motor equipment for our playground. If we look at what our current tuition rate is, and as was mentioned, our last tuition increase was in 2015. And at that time, the tuition was $950 for two sessions. Much of what we've done in our analysis is really looked at it from a two session perspective. So currently, our two sessions, the annual rate for that is $1,100. So that's for two half days per week. Families pay $150 nonrefundable deposit when they apply for registration. And then, but that is credited toward their tuition. And again, our sessions, we do not have full day programming. We only operate half day sessions. When we looked at comparing ourselves to other districts and where we kind of fall in that continuum, we looked at about, I think we looked at 14 other districts, neighboring districts. And as you can see, we, we fell to the 14th spot on that in terms of what our tuition is. This is looking at a one day weekly, so a two half day session combined, what that looks like in comparison to some of our neighboring districts. I think as we were looking at this and seeing obviously that we're at the bottom of that, our goal is really to get ourselves to the, to the middle. We want to be right in the middle of what our neighboring districts are charging for their program. So to that end, we are proposing an increase to tuition for the Abington Early Education Program. What we'd like to do and what we're proposing is that we increase the tuition over the course of the next three years. Again, with our goal of really getting us to that median spot, really smack in the middle. And in order to do that, we are looking at and proposing an increase of 8% for this coming school year, 10% for the 26-27 school year, and then 12% for the 27-28 school year. And while that might sound like a large increase, with those increases, that, looking at current data, is putting us right in the middle of our neighboring districts for that, considering for that two day session. With that increased tuition, we're not just increasing it just for the heck of it. We really are looking to be able to use that increased revenue to support more of the enhancements, including continuing to align our curriculum with the Beaverbrook Elementary School. We're working to maintain really high quality education for our preschool students and really having the materials and resources that are, that they deserve as part of their educational experience. And in doing so, we also want to make sure that we are remaining competitive with, again, with regional offerings, looking to really be at that midpoint. So that's what our proposal is. I'm happy to entertain any questions, and I'm sure Sarah can jump in and help if needed.
I have a question. Do most of our neighboring districts have similar formats that we do in terms of a two, roughly two and a half hour, two session option? Or have other districts moved in different directions?
So it is variable. Some districts do have just set, set sessions. So a couple of districts only have four half day sessions. Some districts have gone to a full day session, and they've offered, they offer that as an, an option for families. It's really variable. I would say the one thing that I think we do that's a little bit unique, and I think it's something that we should be proud of, is that, is the flexibility that we offer our families. Our families come from, you know, we have a wide range of families that we serve. And being able to really work with our families and provide, provide the, to meet their need is really, is something that we do very well. And, and our flexibility in scheduling is something that we don't find in other districts.
Which is probably why our enrollment, we have the waiting list and, great, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? Excuse me. Ms. Robbins, I have, I don't know if it's a question, maybe more directed to Sarah in the end. I guess first, I just want to commend, commend everybody, like the, coming with the rationale of exactly why, putting it together and having the steps is great. I think the only question I have is that, and I'm guessing the answer is yes, but I feel I have to ask it. Are you comfortable that, so we had a one day example, right? Are you comfortable that if they had multiple days, that they would increase at the same rate? I guess like where I'm thinking of, the two sessions makes perfect sense. The rest of them, do you feel it like they're, if you were to pull West Bridgewater, would they increase at the same rate kind of as we would say $550 a session type deal like for this year? Do you think that's
Like, do they have a buy two, get one free?
Or like if they have, so like if they have, if they go for four sessions, would it be $3,200 or what, like, like kind of thing? I, I would want to stay in the average across the board, right? I don't want to go out, and I guess maybe that's, if it became a thing where we realized we weren't, we could just always revisit it as well. So that's kind of where the base of my question was, for all of the different sessions that we were staying within the average for like whatever they may offer.
Yeah, and I would, I would say that we are.
Okay.
I can pretty confidently say that that is the case. Most districts, I can't think of an example where they don't have just equal distribution and equal percentage increase as you increase the number of days, it's increased by that same percentage.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
There's no, there's no benefit for someone financially to go more days.
Okay, perfect. That's all I have. And my mind has something else, but I can't remember what it was, so. Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to ask, so the increase in the sessions will decrease budget needs in the future, correct? For the preschool, for
Will more money coming in?
More money coming in, help us.
Oh, I see. So while it's a significant increase for families, the overall increase is about $8,000 in total. And so we currently offset a portion of the preschool salaries with tuition, but it sure doesn't pay for the whole program. It actually pays for about less than a quarter of the program through our, I believe, the proposal is that that increase in tuition, at least for the first couple of years, will really be used to increase the materials.
Thank you.
Ms. Robbins, I remember what my last question was. Do you currently have a structure in place? School lunch is a bad example now, but there's like process to go about if you can't afford athletic fees, for example. Is there a process for families that would like to send their children to our preschool program, but necessarily don't, may not have the financial means? Like, is there a financial aid
There is not.
Process in place currently? Okay.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a possibility that with these increases, we could potentially see a decrease in the peer student population that might not be able to, would that balance shift in a way that wouldn't be beneficial to students across the board?
I'm sorry. So are you, do you, are you asking if we think we might lose some of our peers based on our increase?
Yes.
We might.
Okay.
We might, but I also do, and I think we as a, as a group really feel like we're a bargain right now. And, and in order to continue making the improvements that we want to make and need to make for our students to increase our, what we're doing educationally for our students, it's really important that we do this.
If I could add one thing towards your question, I think the one thing that you didn't talk about, but that was part of our work as a committee, was looking at private preschools in Abington and surrounding towns. And with these increases, we are still far below private preschools. So I think we, we still are really good value for families in Abington.
Thank you, Dr. Basta. Anybody else have any questions? If, if none else, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the tuition increase as presented. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Sorry, Danielle.
No worries.
All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Thank you. Sarah, thanks, Dr. Basta. So new business established on the next school committee. So we will have our regular January, I thought our regular January meeting on Tuesday, January 28th in three weeks, here in the library at 6:30 PM. Just some items I wanted to mention really quick. I know that, well, let me, let me do dates to remember first. So Thursday, January 9th is an in-service early release day for students. Tuesday, January 14th is the CPAC meeting at 6:30 PM here in the library. Wednesday, January 15th is the boosters meeting at 7:00 PM in the cafeteria. And Monday, January 20th, all schools and buildings are closed in observance of Martin Luther King Day. And one thing I did want to mention, I saw online over the weekend, congratulations to, I'm going to, I'm not going, I'll forget names, guarantee it. So all of the track athletes that medaled, set personal records, set school records throughout the weekend, and also I want to congratulate all the student athletes receiving their varsity jackets, probably right about now at the boys' high school game in the gym. So congratulations to all of you. I know it's a lot of work and effort that goes into it, so I just wanted to congratulate them on that. And then if nobody has anything else.
Music parents are meeting tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night?
Yeah.
What time?
In the music room, I believe, at 6:30.
Music room at 6:30 tomorrow, January
And that's not just for high school parents.
Okay. Perfect. We will be going into executive session and not returning, so by roll call vote, again tonight, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 21A3, for the purpose of conducting strategy session purpose of conducting strategy session for negotiations with A, Abington Education Association units A and B and non-union personnel, since as declared by the chair, to hold this discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of our committee, and not to return to regular session." Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you all very much. I hope you all had a wonderful holidays. And thank you to the administrators who stuck around tonight for being here for the budget. I appreciate your help.